To take that leap and say, okay, I want to study this in college and really just continue it with my career. And that's not just me, that's everyone else who participates in the program. It really helps narrow down what they want to do, what they like, what they don't like. As was mentioned earlier, I was able to put together, help put together and organize a video call with some former members of the program. It was a cool aspect. We're all just students talking about our involvement and where it's gotten us today. Every, I can firmly say that everyone who participates in the program, you will make connections, you will learn how to make decisions. And overall, you're gonna have a fun time. It's a fun time. I couldn't recommend it more. So glad I did it. And I'm so glad I've been able to come back and intern and help out Mrs. Lawber with the program. Because I really think it's something that more kids should be involved in. And if they knew about it maybe a little bit more, maybe they would start joining and really start seeing these opportunities it can present to them. Because I'm just in my freshman year and I'm glad that I did it because I would have probably been one of those people not knowing. Maybe in my junior year, stuck in a degree that I didn't want to really do. So it really opens your eyes, really helps you make these decisions, and I couldn't recommend it enough. As I said, we have a video and we talk a little bit more about these things. We can go a little bit more in depth about it. You'll hear from me and four other fellow former members of the program. So thank you.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining us today. We are all former members of the Experianship Program. This meeting gives us a good opportunity to showcase the exciting opportunities within the program and just talk about our involvement. So if everybody could just go around and introduce themselves, tell us which part or which Experianship you're a part of and what you're up to now.
So hello, everyone. My name is Zach Dardner, and I mean, I was a transfer from high school. I graduated in 2020. I was a part of the Gold Star Chilean Experianship, and I am currently a first year out of Ohio State University studying finance and accounting.
Hi, I'm Natalie. I graduated from Turpin as well in 2020. I am studying finance and real estate at UC with a business law certificate.
I'm Jack. I also graduated from Turpin in 2020. I participated in the Cincinnati Reds and FC Cincinnati Experianships. And I'm currently a first year at Notre Dame studying computer science.
Hi, I'm Emma Gassar. I was an intern with Forest Hills Central Office with party planning. I went to Anderson and I graduated in 2020, and now I'm a first year nursing student at Marshall University.
And I participated in the FC Cincinnati and Forest Hills Experianship and the ZO40 program as well.
And my name is Grant Gazer. I graduated from Anderson last year, 2020. I was part of the Reds and FC Cincinnati Experianship, and right now I'm a freshman at UC studying sport administration.
All right. If Zach could get us started, could you just tell us what your favorite aspects or part of the program were for you?
So yeah, I have a few points here that I would kind of like to say about the aspects of the program. And ultimately, being a high school, it would be extremely challenging to find an internship. And that's something that I've kind of seen in my college days, especially just the competition from upperclassmen and trying to find an internship. So what, uh, what does the program like help you with as, you know, in your high school days? It's so easy to find an internship, especially something that'll go forward and give you so much in your life, especially going forward on your resume and whatnot like that. And then besides that, another aspect I liked is just kind of like the variety of internships that are offered throughout the program. And ultimately, I knew in high school that I wanted to do something around finance and accounting. But there wasn't maybe an internship within the program that specifically catered to that focus. So when I chose to go to the Gold Star Chilean Internship, it was really around franchise development. But once I got there, I talked to my mentor away there, and he kind of helped cater the internship around my needs of finance. So at that point, I kind of went to the financial meetings and decided that part of this. That's kind of one thing that I liked about the program there is that, you know, every internship that you're gonna be looking at, they're all gonna be like flexible with what they're gonna be doing at the internship. So besides that, you know, so last thing I'd kind of like to touch here is the aspects of the internship. Is, you know, really like the real, real world feel that you get from these internships. And ultimately, you know, going through college and whatnot, it just, you really learn from what you put in in the business world. And that's where you like flip forward what you learned in college into like an actual business setting, and that's where it really grows the students. And ultimately, just having that in high school, and you know, even though as a high schooler, I might not bring huge amount of knowledge to this business world and help this, but you know, really my mentor at Gold Star, you know, kind of took me under his wing. And you know, really just kind of helped me out like in a learning process in the business world. And I just found out something that was great for myself to learn at such a young age, that I know I could bring into college, especially my freshman year, where you know, I'm leading in with like steps up on everyone else already having some real world experience on my own.
Absolutely. I like what you touched on about the real world experience because that's exactly what an aspect that I definitely came away with from my personal Experianships with the Reds and FC Cincinnati. So thanks, Zach. And if we could just move on to Natalie and just tell us, what was your biggest takeaway? Or what did you learn the most from your experience?
Well, the biggest takeaway from the Experianship Program is like professionalism because in today's world, being professional in a business setting is like everything. Because I'm in a business fraternity right now, I have a lot of these pledging. And their biggest thing is just being professional with emails, with like work environment, with communicating and all of that. And I learned how to like communicate effectively and precisely with my colleagues and when they're older than me, which is a big part in the business world. And then I also learned how to like be on time, time management, and like how to just work with different people that I'm not used to working with and adapting to the environment.
Absolutely. Like I said, once again, those are all, I think we all have similar experiences where we have the same takeaways from what we experience and the benefits that you get from these Experianship, Experianships moving forward in the business world and college and things like that. So thanks, Natalie. And then Jack, I think you were gonna touch on, or what you would suggest or tell someone who was about to join or thinking about joining the program, or was you doing?
Yeah, um, if you are even considering joining, I would 100% do it. Just no hesitation. I mean, you may think that you're too busy or you don't have enough time. I would really make it a priority to get involved in these, just because they are so crucial to, like Zach and Natalie said, give you real world experience. And there's no reason to be intimidated. I know to a lot of people, to myself, who was intimidated to work with these people with FC Cincinnati and the Reds, but they know that you're a high schooler. They're not expecting you to have all this outside knowledge, and they're really there to help you. It's also great to build relationships in the field you want to go into. Like I know Zach will still have that mentor from the Gold Star, and Natalie has hers from ZO40. And it's not what you know, it's who you know, a lot of times. And it's great to build those connections. Then also another thing, even if you don't know exactly what you want to do in the role, that was me in high school. I had no idea what I wanted to do, and I ended up working with the Reds and FC Cincinnati. And I'm in computer science now. Like that, they're not related in any way, but I still, I don't regret it at all. It helped me narrow down and really discern what I wanted to do. And gave me a great experience to find out maybe I didn't want to go that path. And lastly, I think it's just a great way to stand out to colleges, and everything's becoming more competitive. GPAs are inflated, and it's, it's just tough to make yourself stick out. And having real world experience, like Zach said, he's already legged up on all of his classmates, really makes you appealing to colleges and programs.
Absolutely. And I like what you touched on about, it can be intimidating. Like, for instance, I was, I've always been a fan of the Reds. I've always liked sports. So when my junior year, when this opportunity to work with the Reds popped up, I was like, is this something I actually want to do or am I just a fan? And, you know, getting into that experience and actually working with the Reds and seeing what they do on a daily operation and made me realize, okay, I do want to actually pursue a career in sports. This isn't just, you know, a hobby or something I'm interested in. So it really opens up your eyes to what you might want to do in the future. So thanks, Jack, for sharing your advice to everyone on that. And then lastly, wrapping it up with Emma, I think you were just gonna give us your general comments or thoughts on the program in general.
So to jump off of what Jack was saying, I 100% agree that you should just go for it. I knew that I wanted to be a nurse in college, and yet I still chose an internship with Central Office that really had nothing to do with the like nursing field. But it really opened my eyes to time management and to getting myself out of my comfort zone, just diving head in. And one thing that I would like to mention is, you don't know what avenues it's gonna open for you. For example, I just got an exec position within my sorority, and I'm a freshman, and I was just initiated this year. And because of the internship and because I was able to interview, I was able to pitch for myself, and I was able to talk to these people. And I was able to get this position, which is one of the highest positions for our sorority. So I would say that you have no idea what doors will open up, not only career-wise, but also with clubs and get great interview skills. So I would just say it's amazing in so many different ways, and I highly recommend it.
Yeah, thank you. And like I said, I think we all agree, and we all have the, almost the same thoughts or experience from everything. And we're all recent members. We all just graduated, and like I said, we all can't recommend it enough. It's given me skills and experiences that I didn't ever have this early on in my career in college. So I'm thankful for that. And like Jack was saying, like everyone was saying, I could not recommend it enough to anybody. Just get out there and join. You won't regret it. As you can see, we're all very, very glad we did it. And we can't speak highly enough of it. If anybody had any last comments or thoughts to throw in there, feel free. If not, then thanks for joining. All right. Hi, everyone.
I think, I think we need to give Grant a round of applause. So throughout, throughout the video, Grant brought those hooks together. We heard things like relationships, stepping out of your comfort zone, risk-taking, communication, interviewing skills, real world feel, professionalism, all things that in Forest Hills, we want to give kids beyond the high academic accolades that we're so used to. As the emphasis on standardized test scores increases over time, the emphasis on real world experiences increase. So we're excited about the program, and I'm gonna bring up Donna Lawber. Donna is our committee partner specialist. She could have talked a little bit about the mechanics of this and how we kicked this off, and some of our current partners. And Brian Robinson's gonna talk about some of the benefits as well. Grant is our associate director of secondary. And we will talk about, you know, a little bit more of the details of the program and how we kicked it off this year. So Donna?
I would say the excitement of watching our Forest Hills School District students get successful like this with the staff. And I never leave watching that video. And I have a little bit of a feeling here. There's three of those kids behind us. I'm afraid to think of the actor, Peter Mabel. And what it does, you know, we have kids doing real things. So kind of looking at where we are, kind of making sure you can see how far we've come and where we're going. So looking at this, we look back, and we had over 221 students participate in one or more of our opportunities. So with that, as we move forward, this year we're setting a stage. We're looking at this grade, looking at 90 opportunities just during April and May. And then as you can tell, as we move forward, obviously, we can have as many opportunities as we can fill. But we're looking at trying to get in at least 300 plus opportunities. And listen, a couple of our major partners there for you, Mercy, IUC, Amazon, Taotao Technologies doing some great stuff for us, as well as our partner, Cincinnati, does really amazing things for us. A lot of this has come about beginning with support this year in particular. We received a grant with a success boundary, Ohio High Park Education, for that in a place to help support the work that we're doing here. So a lot of it is making connections and supporting our students. When we set the stage of this, every year that we've been practicing, we've been placing our self-imposition and then directly with the students. And that's where, to me, makes our program a lot stronger, some of the other things that I've seen throughout the University of Cincinnati and the state. So we met and have this year with students from both of the high schools. And our students this year, so we met in February, we did kick off live here. We were probably the most first full-scale level. We did modify the social distancing. We limited it down. So we had 125 students and parents out of our virtual business partners. We had 15 participate in person that night and three that were virtual. That evening was kicked off again on March the 2nd. We had a great turnout and we had lots of successful invites with our students and parents. What makes us a leading group is that every student at Forest Hills was directly connected into the Experianship Program by Schoology, which is, I think you know it's more, that's our portal that every student is assigned to through a class. So we have an Experianship course for 2021, 22, and 23 current. That places 1,800 students into the whole program where each of that student and those parents are able to go in, shop, book, read, find, apply directly with our partners. That is pretty amazing work, and I want to make sure I can note tonight, I know he's doing a great job, Mr. Samuels. Everything all considered, Adam Halls is quite good with that. He does a pretty magical thing with no finances, to be honest. But our students are directly connected here. We're also this year with the grant opportunity, you working directly with the Ohio High Park Education, a partner called the Ohio Readiness Seal, and creating a webinar. This webinar is gonna serve as a platform orientation for our students. It's gonna be a virtual remote class that's self-paced. Students will be able to go into that program, and I'm really excited about this because what we've done is we've made 14 seal points. We're drinking from, you heard the students talking about professionalism, creativity, punctuality, on task, creative thinking. And we have about seven different community partners. And I really chose to make sure I worked with partners of diverse backgrounds, ethnicity, gender, so forth. So our students will be learning in very short clips, communication and so forth from community members of Greater Cincinnati. Once they're done, class is sealed up, and then we know that those students have had this needed general overview. That opportunity that Mr. Samuels and I are working with, completely on many of our partners. Our students, when they're finished, will have that experience as well. And that makes us share with Greater Cincinnati, success-bound college. This is where the magic is. None of this happened without great partners. And I cannot speak enough to all these people and all these helpers that are there. During COVID, watching places and seeing different change taking place in our school community was very difficult. But I will tell you, if we have these people that are up here, I can just, you know, there's 30. I can definitely tell you, we'll see some that are coming soon, some that are gonna be new in our upcoming months here. But to say that these people have stood beside us throughout, and then they kept their doors open, welcomed our students, is more than I can ever say to George. And I know for the district, we really want to make sure that we applaud that work because that's who makes this happen. We have been able to connect our students directly with these partners, and students apply directly. On my face, it says they're getting applications and they're working directly with partnerships. One person in particular up here, I really want to say a special thank you to, is the Republican Law Group. Phil London and Cole London have been a foundational part of working with me directly, giving great feedback. But also, state of bias, sitting through the pandemic and many times working one on one with our students. It says for him, this is the best thing about the job right now, at least that we can give back. This time, but at, as Mr. Robinson come up, so we can go over this on how we can get more funding for our students.
It's good evening, everyone, and thank you again for inviting us here tonight to speak about this program. Really important for us to have to share all of the opportunities our students have to develop. Happy that you talked about how they're growing in comparison to their peers regionally, talk about how to do college in different ways. But the real reason that we exist is to prepare them, right? To prepare them with experiences, to be ready, to be successful adults, gainfully employed. And it is, I heard one speaker at one point, to finally get out of our basements. So our hope is that by giving them these experiences, connecting with businesses, being part of the community, working hard. You heard the why. You heard the why from our students. You saw it in the video. We also are gonna try to make sure that we have some tangible evidence that distinguishes them from their peers, that connects them with their colleges, that makes them more ready and evident and more ready for the next step. So a couple of things that students stick as part of recognition of participating, being part of the Experianship Program is, any student that successfully completes an Experianship will be recognized on the ISEMP transcript, a permanent record that indicates that they were successful in this endeavor. And the way we do that is we've identified all of these business opportunities in a variety of pathways. And so when students go into Schoology, as Donna talked about, and you were successful, you may, you may earn a STEM Experianship or a Health and Human Services Experianship, Business Law and Finance, Arts Humanities, and Communications. So that is one way, as they're, as they're giving their story, talking about what puts the next step, or if we can outline that story with future employers or with colleges. Some of the Experianships are paid internships. Some are, a lot of them are unpaid. It's really your why and the length. As Donna started to talk a little bit about, there's a wide variety of time commitments, whether it be a semester, a year long, or it could be a couple of days. It just really depends on what the business is able to do and what the students are able to do. Students can make this part of their approach to earning credits. And so if a student finds an Experianship and talks about the learning as part of it, they can drive through our credit collect opportunity, a way to earn an elective credit within their program. And then finally, Donna mentioned this a little bit, we really touched on it some as well. Students are able to work towards the Ohio Reimings Job Ready to Seal, which as of last year, with the class of 2023, is one of the ways that they can earn one of the seals that are required for their graduation pathways. In addition, it does work with success balance articulations like work ethic and punctuality, critical thinking, and teamwork and problems solved. So these are some additional requirements. And then finally, these are just some dates that are coming up for the students at home that are thinking about participating. Currently, our Schoology courses are live. They went live on March 2nd. Their students have sophomore, even sophomores and juniors primarily, but even some seniors have some spring opportunities coming up. Our next really big date is April 15th, is when students have to have applications for their summer Experianships in. We have a whole nother round in the fall, and so you see an orange, August 31st is a fall application. November 9th is a winter application. We have all four dates throughout the University of Cincinnati. And I think the last one, if you could just come to us.
So I just want to thank the Board of Education for your continued support of the Experianship Program. I feel like we're, we're off to a good start. We're looking to continue to grow this program over time tonight. We were hoping there would be more audio online so we could encourage more participation. If there's anyone that has any interest in, in participating from a business standpoint, if there's any audience, wanting to work with us to be a part of our Experianship, we're always looking to add new ones for kids. So we appreciate the work, everyone's doing and continued support as we look to expand opportunities for our students. So I'll take any questions, if anyone has any, or we can turn to Mr. Robinson.
This is the kind of stuff that I think makes my heart, I have a question. Make sure, we're all on the same page. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. You know, I've worked in college, you know, and that means there's a difference in the experience. Of course, I'm a video, but it's not unique. You guys may have seen it. And actually, I haven't shared anything, right? I mean, I've worked in, yeah, I've shared it with this person. It was incredibly exciting. I had some, I had a friend, like, I'm not sure if you've seen it, but it's so good. So the fact that we're able to do this right now, and have, and, and the fact that I have a, you know, some of the events that we're having, yeah, it's a brand light in charge. And it's a year that we're getting higher and better.
And you know, experience program, that's one of the programs that sets more associate programs up. And those are the things that we need to practice. And to support and do it, will you do that? And this just group work has done among all of our experts, teachers. And I listen to those students speak, and they sound like they've been living stories for years. And it didn't sound like the first year of college speaking. You know, they were just so impressive. Thanks a lot, Grant.
Thank you.
Good question. So is it open to all high school students exactly?
So we, so on March 2nd, we kicked it off for the sophomore class. But it's open for current sophomores, current juniors, and seniors. So every year, our entry point into this program is the sophomore class. So I, and I know Donna will leave this, and I know this, but what separates this from a lot of other places? And a lot of people has done different things, but we've enrolled all of our kids. All of our students are enrolled into the course. So when they click on SchoolGee, just like they'd see math, biology, et cetera, they're going to see the experience of course, they can click into it. So we've, we've used our platform and been able to connect our kids directly to the business opportunities. And so it's in their hands. So every sophomore, every junior, and every senior can see these opportunities for their duration. They might not be ready as a sophomore, we want them to know about it. But once they're in there, and they're going to be in that course for the next three years. And it constantly updates with new opportunities or new business. We can send, we can send communication directly to the kids when there's a new, a new business that's connected. So in Edge SchoolGee, the neat thing about that is, when a student applies, that communication goes directly to the business. It doesn't go to us, it goes directly to them. So they connect with the students, that's where we're teaching them to answer their emails, call them back, those types of things, because they're not used to doing that. So that's where we, we make that connection and then they have that. So we're using the SchoolGee platform to, to create that connected opportunity. So long answer to your question, but it is open to all sophomores, juniors, and seniors.
Generally, they do it for a couple of months, or they do it, and that's all over the place. Is it usually semester long or what?
So it, it, we have a summer window, a fall window, and a winter window. Some of our partners have an opportunity all three times, some of them only offer winter. Some of them are six weeks, some of them are three weeks, some of them are nine weeks. So that's the part where we sit down and talk to them, and Donna does a really nice job with this. She sits down and customizes the experience for what the business can provide. So a lot of them are scared away by the term internship, because it's just, it's a lot to commit to, it comes with a big stigma of what that really is. So we've called it experience just because we were able to customize that. So it really varies by partner, it could be a week-long thing, F C could be a month-long thing. It just, it just, it's really customized. And then a lot of them, once the kids get into that, they'll ask them, well, what do you want to learn more about? What do you want to know? And then they'll put them in those opportunities too.
Is that one of your questions? So are they greeted, or is there feedback that comes back from the business, have they reviewed? How do you handle that?
Yeah, so Donna receives, Donna receives feedback from the business basically saying, here's this student, and then they have, they have completed that experience. So you want to talk?
Yeah, so one of the things that really, which helps us is we guarantee, like when we create that partnership with the business, it's not like, okay, we've worked on, we really try to recommend, work with them, train them, and interact and engage with them as a business. So we do use Ohio Ready and Still Qualifiers to help that business. Hey, here's the 14 things we'd really like you to focus in on. There's a rubric that goes with that, so businesses have something that kind of helps guide them to. Because they kind of get answers as well, but once a student, we could, our number one thing, number one thing is definitely feedback. And I know Grant talked, and you heard Zach even say, and then talk about the students saying, they know we're not experts and they're going to help us. And that's the most important thing our students can be getting, like I said, these partners are able to do that. Qualifiers can be important, they ask you questions. So we have sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Sophomores can start entering in the summer. So definitely, you know, most of the jobs, they have opportunities, kind of have some kids, may not be old enough to drive, but obviously it's something they're going to be, but we start their junior year. But when we qualify and talk to the sophomore class, our job is to make sure we're listening to what their needs are and to help adapt our programs and our opportunities to them. So I think the business is getting a lot out, and I know I can't wait. Sam Dowd, who's the perfect alumni here, he's the gold star, and I can't wait for him to see that. He will make a compliment, I think, if we're going to do this.
Get to participate in every, every tournament thing, so.
Also having late high school students, seeing what's going on, where I see it, and managed to apologize about this due to, because this year, when any other year, the standardized tests are, they're on their way out. So the only question is how do you differentiate between, we don't have, we don't have that necessarily. But also, Ohio Raiders program for the kids that aren't going to college, gives them a chance to try, I think, so it's kind of a equal opportunity for, for people that can explore things that they may not be right on the ice.
One of the best ones is the I N C, which is Independent Electrical Contractors. Those guys are actually offering a free partnership program opportunity. And that helps students make the decision right, so it really does help qualify. So thank you so much for your support on this as well.
Broadwater, sir.
Good evening, the board has asked me to present on the update of the Anderson Swimming Pool. Grant, you were received so well, Grant, would you like to present on the swimming pool? Where we are is, after the last board meeting, I did contact the architect that we are working with. He is now moving forward, he's actually gotten a lot of work done. We did provide him with the study from Shamrock Pool Enterprises, so they had that, they've had that for about a year as we work through it. We also gave them all the schematics through all of the construction, where sanitation lines are, the H VAC, all of that. We had a fact finding meeting today where the water technologies individual was there, that's W T I. That is the swimming pool expert, he is going to be looking at the pool and the equipment. We also have an engineer looking at all of the mechanicals, which means your H VAC, your micro, your plumbing. So they will look at that. We have a site engineer who will be out Thursday, we'll meet with him on Thursday to take a look at the site and what that means is, figure out the sanitation line, where it is, where's the location, is it robust enough for what we're trying to do? So there's a lot involved with the site. Also, we will have a structural engineer out to take a look at the structures. And it'll be the same structural engineering. If you recall, it was about two or three years ago, we had an issue after a dance, and we had structural engineers come in and make sure everything was okay, and it was. But we've got that, that firm coming back in for the structural investigation just to make sure that we're all set with that. So it's pretty detailed as we go through it. There will be a meeting next Tuesday, the 23rd, where all of these entities will get together and they will start to develop a plan. I had asked them to have this ready for the next board meeting in April. They will probably have it done end of March, beginning of April. When I say they'll have it done, they gave us a quote, and I provided that to the board. I also provided the board a swimming pool comparison and some other data that the board had some good questions towards that, so we did provide that as well. But the quote for $38,500 is to put all of this together and determine if we were to go out to bid, what would that look like? So A, what would it be for us to simply fix the pool without the diving? The alternate would be, what would it be with the diving in addition? So that would be the alternate. If the board decides to move forward with any of the plans, that means we would then have to develop the pool design as well as bidding documents, which means there would be more cost incurred to develop that entire program, if that makes sense. So where we are, we're moving along pretty good. The architect has done a nice job of staying in communication. We will have a meeting this Thursday, like I said, with the site engineer. Next Tuesday, all of us will sit down and take a look at it. And then within three to four weeks, we should have a pretty good idea of what the cost would be. So, are there any questions?
Thank you, that was very thorough. Yeah, I mean, I feel like it's moving along now that we're actually doing the business stuff, so.
There's been a lot of work through the last year or two developing everything. So being able to give them all that information is sped up the process also. Thank you.
So when we changed the mascot, there was a committee that was dedicated to working with that process. And I wonder, can we do the same thing with the pool? Have a dedicated committee that is going to, you know, run the process in all aspects of it? Because I think what happened here is, we said, hey, I need you to go out and do, get, get this information. But once it comes back, what do we do with it, how do we go with it? If we're going to fund it, how do we do that? How do you, how do you take it to fruition?
I think that is between you and your colleagues to tell us how you would like to proceed from this point forward. As you tell us to proceed, then we proceed. And at this particular point in time, we continue to provide information, we continue to do investigation, and we're getting closer and closer to having all the numbers and all of the information that the board needs. And then the board will need to provide us with the process that you would like to see us move forward with.
Yeah, I mean, I think there first has to be a fundamental decision, once we have the information back, what, how we're going to proceed. And then, if we are going to be renovating it, or whatever we decide to do, that's when a committee could perform. But for now, it's up to us to look at the information that comes back, look at the money that we have to make something happen, and call it.
To me, my, my job is to do what you ask me to do. So I'll proceed through this, and then as I get to report, then decisions need to be made, how do we want to move forward? And if the board decides to move forward, we will do it.
So I think by June, we might have enough to sit down as a group and?
By, by June, did you say?
Yeah.
Uh, I think you'll have a pretty good indication of where it's going next board meeting. I think, I think we will have that. What, what I caution is, you'll have a very detailed idea of what the costs are going to be. Like I said, A, just the swimming, and then A plus B where you have the diving. You'll have a very good indication of what the scope of that will be. What I caution is, as you then develop the bid documents, which is a further cost, they do get into some deeper things, so you know, there is a plus minus with, with what you're looking at. But they'll be pretty, pretty close to where you're looking at a cost to, to make a decision.
Do you feel like we have a good handle on permanent improvement projects for the next one to two years to understand what sort of pot we would be pulling from to make this happen?
Well, I've got the five-year permanent improvement plan that we've developed. I have a pretty good idea of what, what needs to be done in terms of the P I funding, and that really is the board direction and how you would like this to go with it. But there's always, there's always something to do with permanent improvement. So we've got, I've got a five-year plan listing out where we could go next, depending on what the decision is. That is up to the board.
Okay, we're up to the item. Now for those, apparently we have YouTube still on, we're 10 minutes in. All you missed was the roll call and the safety announcements and pledge allegiance. So people who are going to the site, interested in this, please. Item 2.1, public comments. We have four up here, you can run just three minutes. Start with Martha Beeman.
Hello, I'm Martha Beeman, I live at 7061 Branson Way in Anderson. And I'm really happy to be here. Thank you so much for the work that you put in. For over 100 years, there was this joke that Cincinnati is a generation behind the times. We can put that to bed, because now, not only Cincinnati with their craft beer culture and their tech industry, but Anderson, leading the way in changing our mascot. We are now at the cutting edge. Anderson High School had a new mascot before the Department of Interior had approved the first Native American secretary of that department. Congratulations, thank you so much, go Raptors.
Next up, Sue Wood.
Hello. I'm here tonight to express my thanks and gratitude to this school board for bravely voting last July to retire the Anderson High School mascot. I also want to commend the Forest Hill School District Administration and staff for tackling the process of change. Most of all, I want to thank Rob and the fellows for his leadership and guidance through a very emotional process during the global pandemic. As always, Rob and his team handled the task with compassion, respect, professionalism, and tact. Rob truly lives the motto of be real, be kind, be better. I love how the committees were created using voices from all interested parties, alumni, community members, and most importantly, the students. I hope we can all pause, take a step back, and allow the students to run with this new mascot and get creative with it. This logo retirement won't instantly cure racism in our schools, our community, or our world. What it does do is make our schools, our community, and our world a bit more welcoming and inclusive. And for that, I'm grateful. So, as a 1979 Turpin High School graduate and proud parent of three Anderson High School graduates, I'm sorry to be expensive, go Raptors.
Next up, Andrea Granieri.
Hello, my name is Andrea Granieri, I'm at 6396 Glen Bear Drive in Anderson Township. My daughter is in first grade at Maddox Elementary. And the beautiful thing about first grade is that our kids learn to read. And it's been such a pleasure to watch her joy as she's putting words together and reading. But what we're learning through that is how much she's really taking it around us, more than we realize. She's reading signs and billboards and things over our shoulders and at the computer. She's watching us. And we've had a lot of conversation about many of the political things that have taken place in the past year, including the change of Anderson's mascot. My family, my daughter, my son will be at Maddox next year, the future of Anderson High School. We're very pleased with this change that has happened, and we thank all of you for your leadership with that, for making sure that Anderson is on the leading edge. And we look forward to setting a good example and continuing to set a good example for our kids, moving us all together positively. Thank you.
Next up, Louise Lawrie.
Good evening, my name is Louise Lawrie, I'm an Anderson resident and also the director of Greater Anderson Promotes Peace. So Greater Anderson Promotes Peace app has been urging this change in the mascot since the early 2000s. We want to say thank you, and I hope that you all on the board have seen the sign that was signed by scores of Anderson residents the night that the decision was made. With masks on, everybody bringing their own markers so that they wouldn't be sharing germs, people stood outside the school district office when the building was empty to sign their names to that, that beautiful banner. And the banner that says, "The time is always right to do the right thing," a quote from Dr. Kane. So I want to thank you to be proud of the fact that we were the first of the four schools who in the Anderson area or the Cincinnati area are changing our mascots now. And we won't be the, they won't be the last, because there are 13 or 14 schools in this area that had such mascots. I want to thank you for all the students who have in some way felt stereotyped because of this mascot or some other aspect about themselves, and for students who see that, that stereotyping is no longer a symbol of the school, that stereotyping is not acceptable. So there's not a message being shared where it's okay here, but not okay there. And I want to ask you also to recommit to the promise that you made to continue with education about Native American studies. I learned in a study recently that most schools in the United States end their Native American education in the 1900s, at the year 1900. So there's not much more education that goes on beyond that date. And Ohio is at the low end of that. There is an excellent resource that I've shared with all of you, and I just want to remind you about it. It's called Native Knowledge 360. It's a beautiful curriculum for K through 12 that's been assembled by the Smithsonian Institute's National Museum of the American Indian. It's easy to use, it's all online, and it fits every grade level and is carefully tied to all the learning standards. So I urge you to continue so that our students aren't left wondering why we made this change, but they're brought forward to see, as Martha said, the exciting news that Deb Cowan, who's just been declared the leader, the cabinet member for the Department of the Interior, and the first Native American woman to hold that position. So thank you all so very much for your courage.
Item 7.1, board discussion.
I have a couple things, you know, that stuff. The one I was going to say about the mascot is, you know, maybe you need to encourage other people to fund it, because the fund is still short. And we do have a policy that the policy committee went over this past week. Because there is no funding, they're trying to go out and get high-dollar donors to donate, and in exchange for that, they can provide naming rights. So I encourage you to look at the policy itself, but you know, if more people fund it, then maybe you don't have to go through the policy, naming rights.
I'm just, you are incorrect, it's a naming opportunities policy. No one is entitled to have their name on one of our buildings or anything of the sort. But the exit is in the policy report, and it's going to be clear that it is naming opportunities. Opening the door for us to consider opportunities on high more, high-dollar donations. And this is district-wide, not just Anderson High School. So that means things like the pool, that are moving very costly, which actually is in Anderson High School, but potentially could be a bigger project for our entire district. It opens the door for us to consider those things. So we'll get to that more as long as we make that clarification.
Yes, and maybe I missed part of the policy, Scott, because when we went over it, we had a, that 11-page document that was the naming rights. But the policy that's actually in our agenda is only a, like a two paragraphs. Is that really the policy, is just that or these?
Yes. The board approves policies when the administrative guidelines come after that. Administrative guidelines are not generally voted upon by the board. Policies are administrative guidelines that were provided to board members as a draft.
as a draft are intended to kind of further share with the board what it might look like when a policy is enacted. So the very first thing to do is the enactment of the policy, first reading, just like all of the others that I had before me. And then the administrative guidelines are connected to that. Uh, and administrative guidelines can change depending upon what's happening without having to actually reinstitute a new board policy. And that is the same for every single policy that the board has.
Okay, so I missed it because when I was reading all the policies that are on there, I saw the naming rights one, but I didn't see the guidelines. You're saying it's, it's within that document on board docs?
Uh, naming rights policy that you have is just like the rest of the policies that are in here. So.
But I'm asking, where specifically will I find the guidelines?
You have.
Is it on board docs?
You, you have them at least. I, I don't know, but you have them for me. Yes, it's in board docs.
Okay. I did not see it, so I will have to go back and look. The other thing I wanted to bring up during open, uh, discussion was the bring your own device, changing the device program. And I supported the district desire to have student devices with the benefit of existing and positive tech support. There are a lot of benefits, but the district has not had the funds to pay for the purchase of the devices. At least that's what I originally thought. Um, other districts have their finances in order and are, and are able to provide students and families, this to students and families. So Forest Hills, it has to pass this expense on to the district families. I think that we need to revisit this because parents do not want to pay for it outside of eleven dollars and are worried for a diminished student experience. I was talked out of getting public feedback before making the decision during the February seventeen Facilities Technology Committee meeting, and I do regret this. I believe the process of approving the device program is rushed. We should have presented it to the public and allowed one to two months of review and feedback before moving forward. The same process as we use for the policy changes. So I'd like to know, how do we address this? You know, we have a lot of public, um, concern over the tech, uh, program. And when I was in the finance meeting this past week, um, the ESR funds, which are the federal dollars, we have two point three part of salaries and benefits. You know, that's the pocket money that can be used to fund this program and then make changes going forward to sustain it.
Fine, I understand that the first year program is, is funded, but that helps. The, I'll bring up the comment, finances in order. And the districts that provide those, uh, computers to students, generally between twenty, spent twenty and thirty, forty percent more per student. So yes, if we had had forty percent more per kid, we'd give up twenty eight million dollars more than that. So if we relate to them, we relate to eleven, for instance, Loveville, Wyoming, Indian Hill, the ones that provide them. Yes, they have, and that's great, and I would love to get to that. I'm with you. The difference is, is that they're, they get a lot more, a lot, twenty eight million dollars for a second to be equal to the one they spent for a kid. So for four thousand dollars more per kid, yes, we could get a lot more than the computer. We get, we have great value in a little bit. So the funds, though, I understand, so the first year, a lot of this is to, one of the reasons that we did, and I always have the same committee meeting viewer, was the, uh, the difficulty in getting the devices in. If we still may have a hard time getting them, you know, even putting in orders in last month to get them in by August, much less if we put orders in in June. We're still waiting on things to be attached. So there was some, that was some of the decision behind why we, why we pushed forward with this. Now, for a lot of the questions that we're getting, I think those are things that we will talk about and that, and that will be done as far as whether grandfather programs and what are the advantages of doing that? Some of the things, and there are a lot of questions which we talked about last, at the last presentation, we answered a lot of those, but I think there's a lot more that are coming up that are part of the, that will be part of the discussion over the next couple of months. Figure out how best to do that. Some of the things that people brought up, the cat program, well, we knew that. We know that, you know, problems aren't good for cat programs and it's going to have to be something different. So, um, so I see that happening. It's, it's happening every day. We're working on, on answering some of those questions. We get through the first year and to your point, if there's an influx of money, if there is something that we, we decide, no, we want to just fund this outside of that, we have to help people continue to do it. One of the things that, as I understood, is in having cat kids that have gone through, we spent a lot more than seventy five dollars a year on our technology over the course of a, of a high school, over the course of elementary, uh, NAGL and, um, and high school. Um, so part of it was, and, and those are things, and I'm with you, and that we need to be able to discuss that and have that analysis and disseminate that signal. This is, and some of the, the staging on when the computers come in and go out and we've all read the bill of boxes is to be able to describe that and look at it overall. What it costs, how much it costs, how much it's worth to the student, to the parents, and then to the district. And, uh, those are things that I do think that you fleshed out, but those are all part of the process.
I think we do need to make a concerted effort to get information out to the community well in advance that we have opportunity to entertain, uh, questions and comments. Then when we finalize the initiative, at least you have a, everyone understands where we're going with it when we had the opportunity to get to discuss that. I just don't like the fact that, I feel like I was rushed, and that's my own fault. I have to take responsibility for that. But I want to make sure I go, continue to do that, we know, because the board continues to do that.
Well, I've been on the board almost four years, and there have probably been maybe three decisions that I felt had to be rushed just because of the timing of bids came in or, you know, something had to be submitted. And I, I do think you're right. This one did come up quickly and we had to do it fast. But I think that everyone made it clear enough, us, that it was still an evolving program and evolving process and that we just had to approve the concept and that we were still getting their feedback. So that's why I was comfortable saying yes to it. I knew they needed to order the devices because I have children who use them in the classroom. And they say the buttons don't function right and hey, the, the D, press a D here or whatever. Um, so I knew there was some urgency there. And I, have you heard a bunch of negative feedback about it? I've, I've seen a few, but I'm not on the Facebook groups where people like me talking about it.
I think we've got a lot of questions and that's, and that's communication to get out to them. There's just, there's a lot of question, there's questions over things that we had answers for. You know, how much is it going to cost the first year? How much, it, what, what kind of safety do you have on? What happens if my kids from a, uh, break? And, and we already, we have answers, we just need to get those out. A lot of those answers are very positive answers, you know? Yeah, it's, it's right, we have another one. It's like, oh, I play a, uh, a great leased car. You get a, you get a loaner right there, you have, you have the technology ready to go. And it's all on the system, what systems are going on? The questions that I've seen have been, a lot of them have answers that they just don't know. Then you get into some of the ones that we, we don't know all yet there, or that are harder to discuss. Not discuss, but to explain about when you get the new computers and get a rollout. If the rollout is, you know, five years into this, it's, I think, a lot more seamless. The first year where people have computers and just bought them this year, or there are junior, maybe a senior, you need it all, the things that we've had these discussions on. Uh, those are the ones that we need to crystallize and finalize as we move forward.
And the last thing I, I wanted to talk about was the, the virtual Wednesdays. I just have a little bit of a different take on it. Uh, we did back in November vote for the virtual Wednesdays. And I had been at, I had started the program, I said, how are you going to monitor the program? And how do you know whether it's working or not? But there was no monitoring of, of the program at the time. So then as it continued on and cases declined, I asked again for substantiation or proof on why virtual Wednesdays are still happening. So this past week, we got a document titled COVID survey results, and I just want to explain what it said. Um, the question, first question was, do you feel safe at school? No other safety data was provided, it was just, do you feel safe? So twenty-one feels unsafe and thirty-six feels safe. The next question was remote Wednesday. At least that's, this is the paper we got, it said remote Wednesday. So I'm not sure what the actual question was. Um, the answer were eighty-seven percent of the teachers say it's a positive change, thirteen say it's not necessary. So I'm not sure what that was opposed to page. And then, uh, there are some other questions and general comments that were in there. But what I, I didn't see, and this is what I want to make sure we pay attention to, is who's our number one priority? So while the teachers are very important, completely necessary, we want that feedback. Uh, I didn't see any feedback or questions or surveys from families and students. And these are virtual Wednesdays, so that's our, that's our priority, that's our target. And, um, if, if we're going to not have school, I think we need to take into account our families and our students, along with the teachers and the staff.
We're going to, item two point one, advertise for bids.
Good evening, a couple items under business operations. The first one is the replacement of the walk-in and freezer at Mercer Elementary. The good news is this is the last walk-in and freezer that needs to be replaced in the district. We've got them all brand new through the construction, uh, as well as, uh, Tia Strauss, who is our food service director, does a phenomenal job. And this is not coming out of the general fund. This is all funds from her fund, uh, that is raised through the lunch program. And, uh, she is to be commended for helping us out through all of this, replacing the, uh, the freezers and the walk-ins. All the while throughout this entire pandemic, her and her staff have been able to feed the kids, feed and fed. And, uh, she is to be commended for taking care of our kids. But, uh, with this, it is the Mercer Elementary School walk-in and freezer replacement. The superintendent recommends the board approve the request to advertise for bids for the stated project. Item eight point two is the district insurance. We are entering the third year, uh, of the three-year contracts. And I provided the board with, uh, quite a bit of information. If you have questions, please feel free to ask. The renewal of district insurance, which is at three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The superintendent recommends the board approve the insurance carriers for a tax premium summary through the Berry Insurance Group for the period of April one, twenty twenty-one, through April one, twenty twenty-two, as shown in the attachment, at the end of this three-year contract. So this time next year, we will have bid the insurance out again.
Is twenty-six thousand higher than last month? And this is because our claims are higher than the expectation?
Yeah, I sent the claims. The, the big thing would be litigation, uh, has increased. I would also add, the other large part is when you go through a construction project, you have what's called builder's risk insurance that we were paying on throughout the entire project. The good news is, to finish the project, what that means is the value that they had placed on that construction now moves into the value of our building. So that, that has increased because we've added a lot of square footage, which is, it's good. We've added value to the district, but the insurance costs a little bit more.
I thought that's what happened last year with the change.
Some of it did, yeah.
And that's why I pulled it, so I see that.
Yeah. And I think I set a reminder out, this time last year, we were able to work with the insurance. We took quite a few of our school buses off. Uh, we saved about eight thousand dollars last spring when the pandemic hit. So it kind of offsets it a little bit. All right, I'll move on to nine point one. Nine point one is the HR report. And nine point one, I will point out, part A, retirement. Sharon Longbottom, who's been a bus driver with us for many, many years, we want to congratulate her. And, uh, she will no longer be driving the yellow bus with kids behind her. She is now going to enjoy retirement, and we thank Sharon very, very much. We have a couple of reservations. Jenna Riddle in the central office and Nancy Barker, who has been a cook at NAGL, also have attended their reservation. For the remainder of the report for letter I, which was the essential personnel, remote learning day change, I did send, uh, a summary of what that means and, and why that occurred. If you have questions, please feel free to ask. The last thing I will say in the human resources report, I would like to thank Mr. John Hecker for all of his work with our vaccinations. We are now through, uh, the second round of vaccinations for nine hundred of our staff. On March twenty-sixth, we have our last second round of about two hundred to two hundred and fifty more vaccinations. So we went through and we have vaccinated about eleven hundred to twelve hundred employees. They all will have their second round of vaccines. Uh, I would like to thank Kroger as well as Mercy for all of their coordination. Uh, but John Hecker, the custodial staff here at NAGL, uh, and I always miss people when I start naming it. But they did, the volunteers, our, our administrative assistants, Mrs. Monk led all of that. Uh, and again, I will forget somebody, I'm sure, but it went very, very well. We're excited to have our staff vaccinated, uh, and we appreciate all of that. So the superintendent recommends that the board approve the human resources report as presented.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Just to reiterate, was our staffing sane?
Yeah, the staffing has not changed on FTE.
Thank you.
Well, so that was actually my question. I'm looking at the report. Is it, am I reading correctly that we're down to ten, um, June of twenty?
Yes, that was the attrition, the attrition process that we've gone through. Yes.
That happened quietly.
Yes, it did. Yes. And, and I will tell you that, uh, I appreciate that. The, I don't believe that we've had, uh, an effect on what happens in the classroom. And that's what our goal always is, to make sure we're not affecting what happens in the classroom. Uh, you always look at, we are entering the staffing season, so I've got meetings tomorrow. We will start going through the staffing and we'll make sure that, uh, class sizes are appropriate as well as make sure that, uh, the staffing is appropriate for it as well.
That attritionary model is, was, uh, I would have to seek specific data from Alana and Mike, but I think that's around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference than what we had last year of, in attritionary savings.
Well, I'm asking because I remember a really concerted effort leading up to the levy. And then I think with everything that's happened in the past year, I honestly haven't really watched it so closely.
Well, I, I will point out that that occurred all the while we were staffing the virtual academy.
Right.
Uh, Greg Sears and his staff, the elementary principal, all the principals, uh, did a great job of figuring out what their needs for the buildings would be. The goal obviously is not looking at the numbers, uh, as we move into the staffing. The goal is to maintain what we've done. It's not, you know, it's not to add, it's to maintain what we have. So that's going to be an additional seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand this year as well. That's the goal. And, uh, looking at the numbers, I think we'll be able to.
Well, you are what I was thinking. So I was thinking now as we ramp up to have full scale in the classroom, do you think we can maintain this? Or?
I think there's going to be, I think that our focus is going to need to be in the student services area, special needs area. I think that, um, there's evidence that, that has been extremely stressful on our students and families and the possibility of that. But I don't, I don't see us moving in areas where we're going to be adding staff back. Our goal, as the board set out, was to efficiently make reductions the best way we could. And that's what we've done. We'll continue to look for those opportunities. And hopefully we will continue to be able to do that without the reduction of programming because that's not been the mandate from our board or our community at least to this point.
I, I would add the majority, the majority of the attrition done last year via staffing was at the elementary. I would add, the majority, the majority of the attrition done last year via staffing was at the elementary level. So what we don't want to do is have class sizes that are not appropriate. So I don't want to say there won't be a spot here or there. What I can tell you is, our goal is zero. But we do have to look at the numbers and make sure we're doing what's best for kids and staff, so that they can do what they need to do for kids. But the numbers look pretty good right now.
Item 10.1, Food Services.
Good evening. Item 10.1 is a motion to approve the resolution to contract with Claremont County Educational Service Center. This is for a placement in their Genesis Center School for one of our students for the remainder of the 2021 school year. And what is included is the cost based on the remaining months in the program, which is roughly 67 days, that is included there at $14,211.37. The Superintendent recommends the board approve this resolution to contract with Claremont County ESC for the remainder of the 2021 school year. Item 10.2 is an agreement with Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services. This is an agreement for just one year for the District to pay for services for students who attend, in our case, Bobby D. Caretback School. While we do not and have not placed students at Bobby Caretback School for the past several years, we are still asked to notify of our intent to utilize these services if they should be needed by Forest Hills. So this is, Superintendent is recommending the board approve the contract with Hamilton County Developmental Disabilities for the 21-22 school year.
Next up, Item 11.1, Treasure Report.
11.1A presents the donors who gave to the local 26,000 of the last month. The majority of these gifts were from the Anderson reported to me after. Item B is a statement of order count, which presents all funds that could be for the fiscal year to date. I'd like to point out that funds 507 and 510 are the funds that are used to account for the federal coronavirus relief fund. We get a lot of questions about how much we get and what we expect to do in that. So those are the funds, and this is the report. You can track that information online. Item C presents the monthly fund receipt for the five-year tax receipts for the month of the fiscal year to date, end of February 28. As you can see, February was simply a high cash flow month as we continued to receive the advance of the guests starting to fill the state's collections. Item C E presents the expenditure and the monthly fund for the month of the fiscal year to date. With 67% of the fiscal year complete at the end of February, with that 63%, with another 4.6% committed. So while the budget is tight, at this point, it is still tracking exactly where we would expect it to be at this point in this year. The February 28 bankruptcy dilations and investments are presented in the items F and G, and Corporation Income Details, and item H. And the detail for the Anderson High School logo rebrand is presented in item I. I respectfully recommend that the board approve items 11.1A to 11.1V.
Any questions? Can we get a loading of the cloud, send it in, item 8.1, 11.1?
I'm looking to talk about conservative work, where they talk about.
Rob?
Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Dr. Resnesses?
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Herring?
Yes. And we've gone to Reports for Board of Education. I started actually with our weekly meeting. I think most people here know that we now have weekly meetings with the township and parks. We've had that since last March. They're a lot more pleasant than they were this time last year, and then what was happening and what kind of was happening. The, today was a short meeting. We talked about the possibility of partnership with the parks and the others part there. There's some improvements there as we use each other's parking lots. It hasn't been a long time since, it was a good idea. I also talked about, I think that we made instrumental, getting our shots up as well. And then going over the vaccines to the township and the parks. Item 12.1, there's the township, you can help.
That follows that. So the TDC is really focused right now on Homorama, which is coming to Anderson in September. And much of what happens right now doesn't relate to the school district. However, we are going to try to make a concerted effort to showcase the school district during Homorama. So this is a time when you're, people from all over the city are coming into Anderson, and then you have restaurants. And they're kind of getting to experience what it's like to live here. And we have committees that are focused on what the experience is going to be, and the school district is part of that. So on our last call, we did a lot of research before we started talking about that. If you remember, we did this past course in Anderson a few years ago, and it had a concept that had people stop by the school and talk to them in the morning time.
All right. I have 12.2, minus two, your report.
We did meet Tuesday, March 9. We talked about some of the funds and what they're used for. For example, the General Fund is used to pay the bulk of annual activity. We have a permanent improvement fund that was initiated with Devon Levy, and is supposed to be used to cover capital improvements, large capital projects. So that within the fund, you would pay for like school roofs, payments, AC boilers, buses, technology furniture and such. But there is not a significant amount of money in that. The permanent improvement is important, because we should be claiming our long-term needs out of there and have funds available to cover those. Our PI funds receive about $600,000 a year, plus the interest is added into this account. So we use about half of that to pay for the debt on the operations center, bus purchase, central office and the Anderson site work, and then all those building renovations. That leaves us not with much ongoing cash to fulfill the remaining capital needs. And that's part of the reason why we, well, that's the reason why we're charging the $75 annual tech fees, because the PI funds here are just not sufficient to cover those devices. We did talk about Fund 467, Student Wellness, which was new in fiscal year 20 for $275. And this is where the state pays us, or gives us money for mental health counseling, wraparound services, and after-school programs. And they do add in increases to this, minimal increases, but increases to this account each year so far. And then the rest of it really was talking about the two Corona relief funds. The 507, Esra Funds, which is for elementary and secondary school emergency relief grant program. Fund 510 is specifically spending requirements and timing, whereas the 507 is less restrictive. The total amount that Forest Hills received was 3.9 million. Technology-related expenditures spent in Humboldt are 869 of that. And we went over the General Fund affected the pandemic. So the state, if you remember last year, they pulled 1.6 million. And also 1.6 million for this year, but then they have now since given us, reduced that down to 750, so that's positive. We are getting money back into this year. And then they eliminated the reductions for the next two school years. So that's very positive for us funding-wise. We went over, another slide to discuss increasing costs related to curriculum revision. This is where the six-year cycle for the math, science, language, and history. So they each get theirs different years. And so that's how you change out books, software, teaching changes, being compliant with state changes, and then new software and things like that. We have booked there 550,000 for these revisions. So, yeah, all right. We have 550 for that, for curriculum. We have 325 for technology. And then this, Alana, if I don't say something, or maybe you can clarify these parts. When we spent the bond funds, we had much more to complete, the renovations. So we used General Fund 9, and we know that was 6 mil, or the 9 million. And then we had to take on some debt for the central office, the Anderson site work, operations centers, and buses. The other part I noticed is our flexible furniture. It looks like it hadn't got replaced with desks, because when I saw a picture at Wilson, I saw desks. Furniture is now projected in this for 50,000 a year. So what I took away from our meeting was, we had all of us need to cover, to finish out the renovations. We had taken some money from all these other areas to cover that. So now we're into, we have finished that part, now we have to bolt down and start putting money in all of these different areas. That's that 1.6 that we're adding to the budget for cost, because it was shifted away. Does that sound like what you were explaining?
Well, I think, yeah, what we talked about is that that during the bond issue, there were certain expenditures that made more sense to capture at that point in time. So therefore, some of the technology expenditures came out of the General Fund as the cash balance has gone down over the last couple of years. We've kind of reduced the amount that we spend because of lack of balance. And I know that as an administrative team, we have practiced with the directors, say to them, to run your district in a physically responsible way, what should your budget be? Because as we know, you can save money on repairs and simple maintenance, but if you don't keep up with those sort of things, you end up having bigger bills as you end up. So that's what we were trying to do by looking at the expenditure considerations and firming up the principles. So that's, I think, what I was trying to portray with that conversation. Does that make sense?
We did talk about our economy cash balance, and that it is a concern. We talked about several areas that we very prepared to other districts, in salaries, overtime, substitute costs, admin costs, building operations. And I did ask Mrs. Carr to conduct an employee separation incentive study. And the reason for this is because we spend more than we take in. Salaries are the highest outlay of cash. And I believe we have more personnel than we needed in certain areas that are non-student facing. And this is not going to be a new conversation. I've been talking about this the whole time, the whole year. And also, the other part was, I've been asking, should a levy in November '22 not pass? What are we doing? You can't just keep going, and then if you don't get funding, then you have a huge drop. So what are the things that we are trying to do now? What things, if we don't get a levy in 2022, what are the things that we're going to have to take care of? I mean, I'm trying to get those things identified. You've not gotten there yet. And I do, I'm very strong in this. I believe we can get a quality education and be physically responsible, but then not mutually exclusive. It was a very productive, intentional meeting.
Item 12.3, Ford Hills Foundation Report.
Okay, so they're not with us tonight, so she's presenting her report. They are currently interviewing to replace the Executive Director of the Ford Hills Foundation. And those interviews will be completed by the end of the month, and someone should be ready to retire from the unit. They're also in the process of recruiting new board governors for the foundation with term student in June. The Executive Committee Charter was approved, so now all of their committees have their own charter. The Governments Committee will begin defining a policy for serving as a physical sponsor for other organizations and consider how Ford Hills Foundation can accept and administer complex gifts. They also were fortunate to be able to match a donation this year and participate in teacher appreciation, which really helped the district. The Anderson Mental Health Collaborative Speaker Series is this Thursday, March 18. The topic is Sources of Strength. And I will actually add a comment to this. That collaborative is a group of all kinds of organizations in Anderson that started way before the pandemic. And they had the meeting to talk about how to better support this community in mental health. And the speaker series started maybe two years ago, and it was happening at the Anderson Center. Getting decent attendance, because it's usually on a school line, and parents have that ability. Now that everything is remote, the series are receiving way more views. So it's a really neat thing, and I would encourage everybody to go to the collaborative Facebook page, like it, follow it, share it, because it's really easy to just turn it on when you're making dinner, and you don't have to be able to participate. And then lastly, registration for the 12th Annual Ford Hills 5K is now open. The event will be virtual because of COVID, but they found some neat ways to pull everybody in. This is one of the foundation's biggest fundraisers, so we would encourage you to find a way to participate in that. You can find information for that at the Ford Hills Foundation website.
You have not?
Just like the income report, a couple things going on. There is a House Bill 200, provides a state support card for school accountability system. It's working its way through the House. I've heard about the Rescue Plan Act. So there is a portion of that that is dedicated for elementary and secondary education. As you see, there is a section of that. And my opinion, though, from the breadth, there was a Senate pass, instead of Bill 19, Bill requires the Department of Transportation to make it known to agencies to reduce regulatory restrictions by 30% by 2025. That would be historic. Those are the things that are going on right now. Policy Committee Report.
The policy can be spent on by the government through this policy, which is a review of all government numbers. Not for the, for our academic policy companies, which are being very, very challenged. We have a number of, we have a number of, you know, we have a list of calls and there are. So action is needed currently, because secondary education requires that people involve local authorities to act on that to be called.
I have one question. Want to talk about the naming rights policy? There is another one, the policy 2431, Interscalpics Athletics. And it says, John Hecker gave the rationale for the change and the need to approve the policy prior to school year to implement the changes and give the athletic directors time to communicate, communicate the changes to the parents of student athletes. What is the, what is the change of policy that's being implemented? Like, what does that mean?
Yes, so what?
Before you go there, this is something that started last year. And when we got into March and COVID, it sort of stopped because of everything that was taking place. So this is not something that is new to the Policy Committee. Last year, we talked about it a little bit, and we're moving in that direction. And so now, I just wanted to say that before John gave us, this isn't. And so now, I just wanted to say that before John gave, this isn't something that just happened this past week. This has been a process with our athletic directors, our principals, Mike Broadwater, coordinating with John and our Policy Committee members last year. So having said that.
Exactly. This is something that we've been working on for about a year and a half, two years now. And it's a process of where the 90% of the policy is still intact. We're not changing 90%, but it's when a student makes a bad choice. What it was always a practice was once a student made a choice that would cause them to violate, okay? They were just put away, just go away. And they were out on their own for two, two-plus weeks before they could even appeal. And we've seen over the years that that's really sort of a negative situation for the students. Whereas if they can stay attached, non-participatory, but attached to the coaches, the coaches can work with them and guide them and help them through those processes to help them understand. So a student, you know, would be at the practices, but would not be participating in the end games, would not dress for any games, would not be in a uniform any of that type. But they still can maintain those connections with the coaches. Many athletes, you know, when they do, or athletes, and you know, this is make those choices and it's difficult for them, they're in a, was that crisis mode? So we never reached out to them, we never gave them the counseling, we never gave them the opportunity to work and figure out how to remedy the situations. So that's what this change is now. It's just during that initial two-week period, once you violate, you're out for a year. But you can reapply for reinstatement within two weeks. But during that two-week period prior to reinstatement, they are going to be able to work with the coaching staff to rectify scenarios and learn better choices and really feel the action of the discipline and move forward. And it's better for the kids. It's taking care of our kids instead of just shunning them off and not being able to connect. And this is something, I think, Elizabeth, you were at last year when we were working through this, and then we reviewed again with DeeDee and Leslie this summer. So really, this has been a year and a half-long process.
Yeah, so I, that's where I'm looking at it too, because it was pretty close to adoption.
Yes.
And now, and a lot more has changed. Like, are these the same changes that were?
Those were the exact same changes. Yes.
This was in response to what we were doing last year?
Yes.
Just coming back up?
Yes. It's just, we finally got to a point where we felt everything else that was going on this year, that we had a chance, but we didn't want to wait another year.
I'm just trying to figure out how it gets implemented. Like with my kids, I go, you do it, you're done. It was a pretty, you know,
Yes.
severe consequence, right? So this is kind of, I guess I'm not understanding, they can kind of hang with the team, they're still on suspension.
Yes.
But if they appeal, then the likelihood of the appeal?
The appeal process is exactly the same. They still have to be opial. And the appeal can be denied, even if they're working with the coaches during that time. So the process, it's just that two-week period when the student is lost. The student athlete is lost, and that doesn't have an adult to interact with. This is giving us an opportunity to interact with that, you know, young man, young woman, you know, and move forward with that way. This does not have, just because they're participating does not mean the appeal is an automatic binding search intervention.
I had your same questions. I did. And Tony Aldar and Hugh actually came to the meeting and explained why they were advocating for it and why it was so important. So I, I declined to interrupt him, but I asked the same thing. I said, I mean, back in the day, you did it, you were out, you were punished. And, you know, that's just, sometimes we can be a little soft these days. But we are implementing this with the intent of rehabilitation, which is really what we're here for.
And that's, thank you.
And the only other question I have goes back to the naming rights policy, and I thought it was a little rough. Have we granted any rights to anybody so far? I think, no?
I just want to note, this conversation about any opportunities may have arisen because of the Anderson Mental Health. Um, we, well, it really has opened the doors, the conversation about another potential area for this renovation. And I really appreciate all the feedback that we've received, the comments, of course. And I love that education, especially not being on a primary school. Actually, some, some potential declines, and this gives us a chance to really consider alternatives. And frankly, we are in the main game when we start considering alternatives. We all mentioned that very, you know, different, uh, let me, so. If we don't, we can provide an opportunity to consider alternatives. Again, not just for our individual, but for broadly for the district, including our overall community. And it's not like, we're not going to take any check, but I mean, that's to be fair. There's a process, and there's a quite thorough process, actually. So I would encourage everyone who does have questions for something about, um, to take the time to read it. You know, that's what we do. We, how first we, it goes back to the district. There are issues or questions, things to clarify, maybe we work on it, and then we bring it back to us and we can do the second reading. So, you know, really, we are located in, and for our overall, should the fit be right and be appropriate?
12.7, Kansas Mayor Report. One of the things that Josh did is that all of their fire by turnbacks, along with the two or four. Teaching argument.
Us, lots of us. So we talked a little bit about the virtual academy and what enrollment looks like this year. It peaked at 12.7% of our student population and currently at 10%. We recently got some feedback from families about their intentions for next year. And it looks like it's 0.01% of our associate students, is that correct? Have interest in virtual for next year. So this will become a more decision-making, uh, at some point in the near future to decide what we're going to do next year. But we're already gathering data to make decisions so that staff knows how to be prepared heading into the months where we typically hire staff for next year.
But we do anything now because we're February, right? Isn't that where we sign up for the next year classes? Does that kind of come into play?
So we, the feedback is helping guide, guide where we go. So the course selection process can continue to go at the high school, both of our high schools. But there's a, you know, depending on the direction we go, we feel like we can adapt based on the current numbers of the kids that want to enroll in courses. So it doesn't, it's not going to stray from the process of the course selection process. But for those families, if we have a virtual option, we'll be able to adjust to that for those few students that watch it.
We also talked a little bit about what Patty mentioned in terms of budgeting proactively each year for curriculum revision. So curriculums for each course of study are revisited on a timetable. And there have been years in the past where it's been several million dollars in one year just to revise curriculum. And what the district is looking to do now is we're trying to be more sustainably planning and forward-thinking with our finances is project exactly when all the curriculum revisions are going to happen, pre-budget that money so that as taxpayers, we know what to expect into the next five years. And it really, it really looks good, but it is a shift from what we've been doing the past two years. And then, and the last thing we talked about was the math course of study. They're working on increasing the rigor at earlier grades so that students can experience algebra and geometry in seventh and eighth grade and more quickly advance on the night school, some technology.
Talking about something our, students tend to respond to challenge very positively. I thought of Anderson High School and AP program. It was great, but it wasn't just that people were taking the classes or AP plus courses, they were actually doing well. They were succeeding in those classes, actually, they weren't necessarily challenging themselves with the new path. So it's a, it's a great program that I'm sure our kids earlier took over this program. All right. 12.9 technology facility. I have 12.10 secret association.
Good evening again. I was reflecting here a little bit, and I was thinking that, you know, we had this board meeting, it's only been since February 22nd. But one year ago, on March 13th, the district was restored by the order of the government of Ohio under the line. And since then, the work of the Association and Board has been collectively working to serve the students of Forest Hills School District. That may seem a very simple statement, but I want to remind all of us that that's very, very unique. And in Ohio in particular, to see our doors, they open, our Association and our Board working collectively to make sure that we provide safe environments, learning environments and face-to-face instruction, that's something special. So everybody here needs to make sure, just take a moment. Good, bad and ugly, put it aside and make sure everybody's focused on what we can and are doing with things for our kids and our community. Over the past few weeks, it has been quite busy. I've heard several reports, and I took the Association with our boards, finance means, policy, teaching, learning sessions. And this provides a sheer understanding to be to regard for our district's current strategic decisions. It helps work together to make sure that we're all in the same, you know, flow of work and developing strategies that are effective for our, meaning our students. Past recruits also saw rebuild the Anderson High School mascot. Safe congratulations to Mr. Fallow, there was a lot of work and the teams that have been involved with that. And also to the Board for its courage and ability to make a tough decision, create change and lead through difficult times as well as during trouble. So thank you so much for that. And I know a lot of you are saying, go Raptors. I'm still a little upset that maybe Riverhawks, they could, but they can move on. With that as well, thirdly, I know Mr. Broadwater thanked Mr. Efrid, but really, there was a lot of volunteers. And there's some ladies here who did tonight, and people that has worked with the vaccines. That is a huge accomplishment. This is, they get to see or be part of it, to watch so many people come through here very rapidly, when we shared this facility with a high school. And we're able to show our community and our teachers, we have great response, our staff, our coaches and so forth. So I believe we are only go here as many people were waiting and anxious in our Forest Hills seeing that process and inspiration through the floor. I said, besides my pitching arms a little sore, I'm doing okay. That is a joke, not a joke. Fourthly, FHA connected with Mercy Health Flex to create a program, it's pretty awesome, really. Just sent out over 500 flyers to our teachers and worked with something that I thought Mercy did a great job with this and saying called rejuvenate and revitalize relaxed program. So over the next, probably about four or five more weeks here, Mercy is offering discounts and giving away body massages and all kinds of great things to our teachers to help them get themselves through here the next months. We also want to make sure that we have, and I want to make sure I totally extend it publicly tonight, depreciation week that was hosted by our Forest Hills Council was fabulous. I can't say enough, the teachers were quite excited. Many of our educators and administrators that got to participate in some really brave things as the Forest Hills Council. These are the great community partnerships that we create as well as our teachers and our board, we all work together. Show appreciation for all the things that take place in our school district, but thank them very much. Lastly, I know tonight we've been closure as we've talked about remote messages and what they provided, which is really something amazing, again, quite magical to see a school district our size be able to attain and get through face-to-face instruction as long as we have. And that times also as we keep a sustainable workforce, moving us across, the ability to educate our students. I'm beyond proud of our dedication and ability to provide face-to-face instruction. During the summer, a lot of you can go, I know the great Sears sitting here behind me and Mike and Mr. Preble. We all worked, and Mr. Efrid in particular, worked on talking about how to return to school with the intent to be with our students. Never once was there a faltering moment that we said we were not going to work together to make this happen for our students. That's an amazing attribute of Forest Hills School District. I know tonight, Mrs. Myers mentioned how the Homearama, I read a little comment today, and I shared it with Mr. Preble, where it talked about Forest Hills School District is an accomplished and dedicated school. And that's something to be very proud of. And we're talking about bringing in 48 new home sites with many of those homes starting at a high, high dollar. But to think that they showed our community be part of this really outstanding, and one of those reasons obviously is because of our school district. What has happened at Forest Hills is unique, and tonight I say please accept our gratitude from the Association and optimistic hope for continued safety for the school environment in the weeks ahead. And that I thank you so much.
All right, so we do not have a debate session. Before we adjourn, just a couple of comments that continue back on that. It's hard to imagine, 366 days ago, we had no idea this tech. We're arguably still a long decade, but we have come a long way. People on the room, our community, our students. Never been too proud of having this past year for what the teachers have done, what our parents have done, what our kids have been through and have been able to excel in absolutely crazy sort of. And it's been, we have issues absolutely, we're working through them every, every day. But if you look at the big picture, us being in school, our teachers teaching our kids, our kids learning, our sports are growing, our orchestras in, our dance team is dancing, and through the whole year, it's been just. And then I just want to have a quick shout out to someone who can't give enough gratitude. And I have no more respect, Mr. Fallow, for the past six months, he's a spark of soul in this high school. No one I know believes one in one, and I appreciate having you. With that, our next regular meeting of the Board of Education is on April 26, 2021. Welcome here. Get a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second. Hard to hear from me down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you all for coming.